To Lightbringers Padgett Study Group Pilot Project. On behalf of Lightbringers, I am just thrilled to be able to welcome you all and to have the opportunity to introduce the program planning team that has been meeting for these past few months. And when we put out a call for a Padgett Study Group, because if it wasn't for James Padgett, I wonder if any of us would even be here? And what a legacy this brilliant man who lived over 100 years ago has left to the world, the truths of divine love and magnificent celestial messages of all the truths, the laws of creation from Jesus and celestials. So we pay tribute to James Padgett. He's been part of the planning sessions with our amazing team. And he's come and said that he may come and speak to you as the program moves through the five sessions. And it was so challenging. How on earth do we take the life's work of this amazing, brilliant man and wrap it up in a program? So as you can imagine, we're only hitting the highlights in these five sessions. And we're counting on each and every one of you to give us some feedback about where we go from here. Once this program is over. And I see Jimbo nodding vigorously because every meeting he'd say, but what about this? And what about that? And this is some important and you can't leave this out. You have to cover that. And oh my goodness, like it, it's just impossible. But we have come up with five sessions to give you a glimpse, hopefully. And homework. Padgett came through in one of our planning sessions right at the beginning. And he said, in this day and age, which is so different from what it was like 100 years ago, with everyone on devices, everyone rushing, many, many stressors. Times have changed. And he recognizes that those messages of 100 years ago are long. And he asked us to choose excerpts. So the team of facilitators has been searching for the kernels of truth. And then when they found the most brilliant messages, then they went deeper and they chose excerpts of messages. So we have done our best to follow the instructions of James Padgett himself to try to put these sessions together. And the goal of this pilot, and thanks to Shawna Perry. I hope everyone has met Shawna because really she's the brains behind this operation. Not only is she beautiful, but she is brilliant. And if it wasn't for Shawna, we wouldn't be nearly as organized. And she's actually given me a little script. So, but I know if I've forgotten anything, after I introduce the team of facilitators, I'm introducing Shawna and she'll just tell you all anything that I have left out. So we're going to do things a little bit differently. No, pardon? Oh, Arlene, could you please?
I'm sorry.
Um, we'll do things a little bit differently because I think everyone on the screen here right now knows each other. We won't have introductions, but we will have a closing circle at the end. And we'll just have a go around at that time and ask each person, give you an opportunity. Of course, you can pass what you're taking away from the first session. This first session is full of information. So without further ado, oh no, I have to read Shawna's notes here, my script. So the following topics, since we aren't going to be touching on them very deeply at all in these five sessions, we want to leave you with a tickle and give you an idea of what we're leaving out. And we'll bring this back to your attention through the sessions and at the end of the program, especially when we invite your evaluation feedback. Because we want to find out which of these topics might be your preferences for the next program. Soulmates? Anybody, anybody wave if soulmates is on your mind? Well, for James Padgett, the other guidance that he gave us was, he said, make it into a romance story. And James and Helen have the most amazing soulmate story of the century. So we, that is a topic that we put out, that we could offer in the next go around. Immortality, transformation of the soul, the laws of rapport and communication, reincarnation or incarnation of the soul, soul perceptions, faith, soul encrustations, forgiveness, sin, the first parents, expiation, and the law of compensation. So there you have it, a whole smorgasbord, another treasure chest waiting for us after the initial five sessions. So without further ado, I want to introduce the wonderful team, the planning committee. And first of all is Cliff D'Addora, Give a Wave Cliff. Cliff lives in Northern California. He is not new to divine love or studying the Padgett messages over 20 years. 22 years or more Cliff has been reading and praying and using the Padgett messages in his daily life. He's fairly new to us. We only met finally in the last year. And so when we decided at Lightbringers to offer a Padgett Study Group, Cliff came to my mind right away. I think it was some guidance. And so I asked him if he'd be interested. And honestly, I thought, what am I doing? I don't even know this guy. But he stepped up right away. And so he's become like family as we've been meeting together every Sunday. So thank you Cliff so much for stepping up. Then the next person to step up was no stranger Raphael Legros. Raphael originally from Reunion Island. Oh, this man, he's less than half my age, accomplished twice as much. And he's lived for two years in London, in New York and Paris. And he's traveled with Al and I on retreat to New York. He has a groupie there. Old friends, connections, led many workshops with his wife on soulmates. And now he's the vice president of the First United Spiritualist Church. In his spare time, if you can imagine that he has a minute a day, Raphael has already written a script, a movie script for, to tell the story on the big screen about the life of James Padgett. So I invite you all for your prayerful support in hopes that this great dream will come true, that a movie could be made of this extraordinary life and the soulmate story. Thank you Raphael for stepping up. And then, oh, one of my favorite boyfriends from Punta Lula, Hawaii, Jimbo Walsh. And we knew Jimbo by reputation for many years, but we finally met him in person in 2014 in Washington DC at the 100th anniversary of James Padgett's published messages. So Jimbo has been a frequent guest right here in Gibson's and at the First United Church. He's an amazing storyteller. He's married over 3,000 couples on the beaches in Hawaii. And he is our dear brother, our dear friend. And hopefully, as James Padgett has said, he would like to come through with some messages during this program. I think we're all open to that, aren't we? Everybody open to that? No pressure, Jimbo, no pressure. Yeah. And he's also a wonderful singer. So hopefully we can integrate some of his beautiful songs during this program. Thank you, Jimbo. Now, last but not least in our planning committee is Dorothy Clausen, our beautiful sister that has been very close to us since 2012 and her father Percy for decades before. So Dorothy and her family are very precious to her. And those of you who've been attending the Zoom circles, you know, she has the most powerful prayers that can uplift us into that blissful state in harmony with God, receiving divine love. So Dorothy and her family have grown up with the teachings of James Padgett since she was a child. So thank you so much Dorothy for trying to help Shawna balance out the male contingent on this planning committee. Last, but definitely not least is dear Shawna Perry. Shawna is relatively new to divine love. She was introduced by Ricky and by her friend Denon. She attended her first Zoom circle last November. And all of this is very exciting, very new to Shawna. So not only has she got incredible administrative skills, but she's wonderful at keeping this team of kittens. It's like herding kittens, isn't it Shawna? And keeping us all on track. So that is definitely enough for me. I'm turning it over to Shawna. And then I will see you back again for the, the closing remarks. Over to you Shawna, thank you.
Thank you Jean. That was a great intro. Thank you for everyone's introductions and hello to everybody. I don't know all of you, but we'll get to know each other. And like Jean said, I'm very new to divine love and James Padgett. So I'm actually taking the course with you. I've just been administrating it, but I'm excited to learn as everyone learns as we go along. So we won't normally do this, but because this is recorded, I'm going to go through some housekeeping and the structures of the classes. Because there's a few people who can't be here tonight and they'll be watching the recording and then getting caught up for next week. Also, Jean, I'm not sure if you mentioned this is a pilot program. We want everyone's feedback and so we're recording it and we might be using it to study in the future. So let me go through a few things. If anyone has any questions, they can ask me after the session tonight because Raphael has prepared an excellent slideshow and presentation for you. So the structures of the classes are going to be a different topic each week. And after today's introduction to Padgett, we're going to go over the topics of prayer, the soul, the difference between natural love and divine love and who and what is God. And we're mixing it up. So each week you're going to have two of the five facilitators that Jean introduced be leading each class. So it'll be a little bit of a surprise and excitement for you. And in each class, we have a portion of a lecture. There'll be a discussion and there'll be prayer. And that order might change from class to class, but you can expect that that will be in each session. And also as Jean said, there'll be a chance that a message may be received from a celestial angel. And in some of the courses, classes from time to time, we might break out into smaller breakout rooms if we feel the need to discuss in smaller groups. And we'll have a facilitator in each of those breakout rooms. And then I think most of you know from my many emails that there are classes every two weeks. And so the homework is going to look like up to five excerpts chosen. And then you'll receive that in email the day after class. So for example, tomorrow I'll send you an email with the following classes reading. And you'll have the links to the messages and the page numbers to the volumes so that you can go further if you wish throughout those two weeks to delve deeper. Also, we have a WhatsApp group, so we can add you all to that. And then you can discuss during the two weeks. If you prefer not to be added to that, please let me know after class tonight because I'll be adding people tomorrow. And Stephanie Beal and Carol Gallagher, they are in the class, but they couldn't, they couldn't come tonight. So they're two of the people that will be watching the recording and catching up. Just in case, if you see that someone you don't know is here tonight, do introduce yourself at the end when we go around and where you're from while we do our discussion. And then I know most of us are very, very used to Zoom, but just for the future, for recording sake, I wanted to go over a little housekeeping. So please make sure you're muted unless of course you're, you're speaking in discussion and your video camera icon and your mute is in the bottom left corner on a computer. And you can toggle between the screens, your gallery and speaker view in the upper right corner. And I know that here like people use their real hands, but sometimes for the administrator, it's easier because of the participants list. If you go down to your reactions button on the bottom of the screen and you click on that, there's a raise hand. And so I would suggest we use that raise hand option. You click on that because what happens is it stays up until you choose to lower the hand or the host lowers the hand. That way there'll be no confusion on who's trying to speak and who would like to speak next. So let's try to use that through these sessions. I think it will make things easier. That is all I have to announce. Yes, Jimbo, thanks for practicing. Good job. Okay, so does anyone have any burning questions right now before we get started? Just so you can all be present during the presentation? Let me just check for raised hands. No, and we're all here. So I haven't heard from Lisa. Have you heard from Shalora Raphael?
No, I think maybe she forgot and gonna send her the replay. She's a text person.
Yes. Okay, we'll be sending out four replays. Okay Raphael, now with no further, what am I trying to say? Adieu, over to you.
Hi guys, so I think this is the moment we're all waiting for, which is the opening prayer. I think that's a fit thing to do for such a circle. There would be a study, so we'll, we'll enter with a soul. So if you follow me, I'll say the opening prayer. Dear Creator God, thank you today for uniting all those beautiful soul for reminding us of your divine truths that came first to your elder brother Jesus. And then through the eons of time, some have found it until James came along and wrote all those beautiful messages so that it is plain and clear that your truths of divine love is available to all no matter the circumstances. And the simple truth of receiving it should we want it is plain and simple. And yet, the highest truths of this universe. We ask today that while we are listening to the presentation, to the words, you might be listening with our heart and soul that our understanding might go deeper. We thank you. We love you. We invite your angels with us. We invite your protection with us. Amen. Right, so let me share my screen. So hopefully everybody can see it. So Padgett, for those of you who don't know how it looks, this is Padgett towards the end of his life. We'll get into, let me check if I can just press a button for this. Okay, so this is what Jean brushed over is a love story. The love story between Padgett and Helen. And they appear to be soulmates. And we, they didn't know that until Padgett became a medium and Helen told him. And, and, and so it is, it is an example from a real life, how soulmate, you know, can be in earth life together, maybe not knowing it, goes through the same up and down that, you know, we have relationship. And yet, when they heal, when they unite, they sort of transcend. They work together and they produce something beautiful. And it's, it's worth noting that in the Padgett messages, the word soulmate is mentioned so many times. And there's so many examples of soulmate, so many soulmate stories. And I kind of believe like if you, if you don't really believe about soulmate or you have no precise idea of what they are, after reading the Padgett, you'll know everything about them. And so Padgett and Helen, the challenges, I guess you're a little bit familiar having read the biography. But this is a story of a man who lost his wife and through spiritualism, through the practice of, you know, consulting with a medium and then later on automatic writing, managed to get in touch again with his wife Helen. And from the mundane message, we sort of move into the more spiritual message. And those Padgett messages, like I say in the tag, in the slide, what they build together from then on is a pearl beyond price, a treasure to be shared by everyone on the planet. So I found it neat that such a, such a beautiful message is originated from, from a love story. So let us start from the very beginning. We go through the life of James Padgett because there's so many messages are from a personal nature. Sorry, from a personal nature. And you have so many names that come into the Padgett and are from his relative or from his friend. So it's very useful to go in the first class to the life of James Padgett. So you can navigate through those messages. James was born 1852. And he had, he was born in Washington DC. Ellen, his soulmate, was born in Maryland. It's nearby and she's 10 years younger than him. It's, it's, it's important to note as well that Anne Padgett, the mom of James Padgett, she's, she's names the same as our grandmother. And grandmother is referred to Anne Rollins. And there's another Anne that is a daughter. So that could be a source of confusion. So I just want to make sure you all know that. And John also is in the Padgett messages. John was a butcher. And we could say that James, you know, had a normal means, he was not wealthy. He grew up in a period of American history that was quite severe, you know, with the civil war. And that really informed his mind, his choice of career. Helen, on the other hand, she grew up, a father was a merchant, but he was also a businessman. He had a shop. So his father was a reverend, but he was also a merchant. And, and so she grew up pretty protected and, and sort of rather wealthy. And they met after, after a while when the family moved to, of Ellen moved to Washington DC. So I, I chose to, instead of having readings, to having excerpt from different mediums, contemporary mediums, because I found those accounts that just, just like storytelling. And I, and I, you know, I wanted to let James and Helen tell you a little bit about snippets of their life. And I'll, I'll get Shawna to read them for the most part because she's a much, much better reader than I am. Go ahead Shawna.
Hey, thanks Raphael. "I was an eight-year-old boy when the civil war erupted. I knew how awful the whole thing was, for I lived in the capital. Though I had never seen President Lincoln, I heard a lot about him. After he died, I, as well as the rest of the country, began to realize his true greatness. My parents were not prejudiced at all against black people. And when I was receiving the messages, I considered this lack of prejudice to have been a divine gift, for it predisposed my soul to feel the same and thus did not allow this darkness to enter my soul. As I grew to manhood, I carried with me these early experiences. And this predisposed me to study law. I saw it not only as a way to earn a good living, but also as a way of doing good. For though I was not ever a saint, still I was a good person with a great desire to help my fellow man. The type of law I practiced did occasionally enable me to do this good, and I found this very gratifying. I was raised in the Methodist faith. As I look back on it, there were certain times when I was in church with my parents that I could feel something tugging at my heart. I know now it was Jesus who was beginning to form a rapport with me."
I found it interesting that Jesus sort of groomed him early on. You know, and it reminds us of the contemporary medium that we know and have similar story. Next slide. Okay, so this is Helen's now telling her about to Alfie.
"I grew up very comfortably. My father, a minister, was a merchant who profited well even during the civil war. We had servants, not slaves, who were treated with respect and had their place in our family. My childhood was one that was far from the deprivation most suffered as a result of a country torn by war and strife. Indeed, I was very sheltered and somewhat coddled in my formative years. I was well-educated and brought up to be a lady. My disposition was sweet and very innocent. I saw the world through rosy colored glasses and was content to do so. I had my coming out in my 18th year and felt like I was ready for marriage and imagined a grand life full of promise and elegance. I had my suitors, but when I met James through mutual friends, my heart was all aflutter. He was a handsome, tall man who carried himself well, if not a little too sure of himself. His eye fell upon me as well and a courtship began. Several months later, we were married. Ned was still articling and not altogether well off. So we lived with my parents for a while until we got on our feet. My parents approved of Ned because of his confidence and prospects. And they were happy about my choice in the beginning. In time, we settled down and raised our family."
That's a classic soulmate story. They meet, fell in love, feel a lot of passionate love and few months later, they are married. All right, so let's go. And so I'll talk about the good years. So basically sort of 1870 towards 1900, I would say. Again, because those names will be in the Padgett messages. So Padgett started studying at a school called the New Market Polytechnic Institute in 1870. That's where he makes a lasting friendship with Professor Salliard. Most of you know because he's giving another message for the University of the Soul, Lightbringers. He was a very famous professor and very much loved by the community. So based on this great education, Padgett, as his mind, he wants to study law. And again, he finds an amazing mentor in the person of Albert J. Riddle. Albert J. Riddle is a prominent figure, is a former congressman and personal friend of President Lincoln. So for the next three years, he's studying law. And I don't know how long law study are nowadays, but I'm pretty sure there are a little bit more than three years. And after, in eighteen seventy-six, he actually practiced law under Riddle, Miller, and Padgett. And that's going to be basically his career for forty-five years. I've, I've said already that in, so just after, a few years after he finished study, that's when he met Helen. So he's like a dashing, brilliant young attorney. That's a photo of James Padgett when he's twenty-five years old. And I'm being told Dorothy's son looks exactly the same. And then, you know, so they, they, they sort of moving together. First, they move her at the family of Helen, because Padgett, again, is not very wealthy. And after a while, they get their own place, and three children follow, two years in a row. Edward, Edward Riddle Padgett. And then two years later, Harry is born, Harry Padgett. And then, I think, eight years later, Ellenita is born in eighteen ninety-two. So she's called Nita or Baby in the Padgett messages. And she is very much loved. Like, if you could say that they had a favorite, which I'm sure that they have a favorite, but that would be Ellenita. So James reflect on this, on his marriage. Shona, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to read this one.
This is the one you wanted to read.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I'll read this one. "So I eventually married, and Helen and I had those three children, whom we both adore. She was a great support to me and a beautiful mother. We live a somewhat prosperous life in Washington, where I practice, but my ambitions often got the better of me. I was a bit of a risk-taker in the realms of finances, and often gambled on money on dubious ventures. And some days we were well-off, but the future was never secured. I wanted to prove myself to my family and Helen's family. I was a success, and I certainly see now that this vain pursuit often got the better of me. Because of our financial inconsistencies, we were often forced to change our residences. And that was a great embarrassment to Helen. One day we were on top, and the next we hit close to bottom, all because I was susceptible to the next scheme to become wealthy. I was at heart a gambler, and this compulsion racked great havoc on my family and our marriage. Also worked a great deal in order to keep us afloat financially, as it was very important to keep us appearances, appearances for both my career and our reputation around town. My lack of presence in the home did not please Helen very much, as I was often either in the office or out with my lawyerly friends, enjoying a drink and a smoke. Helen was always at heart a sweet soul, who did not approve of my wicked ways. We often fought about my shortcomings, and this was ongoing in our marriage. For the most part, we kept our appearances and sent our children to the best school we could afford. We lived our lives putting more into appearances, rather than building a relationship of love and harmony. But we persisted as long as our children were at home." Helen's now reflects on her marriage.
"In time, we settled down and raised our family. Ned was a bit of a dreamer, and I had grand plans of, oh, Ned was a bit of a dreamer and had grand plans of his own. His ability, though, to discern the right course to accomplish his goals was lacking. He also was quite stubborn and did not take to advice very well. My father tried to advise him on several occasions, but Ned did not listen and insisted on his own course of actions. He was also very busy and in demand as he built his own law practice. He was a very good lawyer, but unfortunately, a poor businessman. I tried to support him as best I could and be his loving wife by his side, but my patience, along with my health, began to wane as the years flowed by and our prospects became less certain. We did argue from time to time, with many of my expectations not met in our marriage. My dreams of a romantic life of leisure was never realized, and I must admit to some bitterness. In time, the distance did become so great between us that I felt it best to move away and live my own life with our daughter. We were at the time living in a hotel of not good standing, and my patience was running thin, and I left burdened with sadness and resentment. We both grieved our losses, but I had to move on for the sake of our daughter and for my own well-being. These were difficult times, which became more difficult as my health deteriorated. In those days, medications were limited, and other than being offered laudanum for my breathing discomforts, the doctors could do very little to treat me effectively. I was forced to go to a sanatorium for rest and rejuvenation. My condition became worse, and eventually I died."
So this is a classic story of, you know, lack of communication and sort of, you know, James stuck in his own way, ambitious, career-focused, not enough present at home. And Helen trying to keep up and eventually sort of driving herself to sickness. And, and you know, at the time, you get something, a lung condition or a heart condition, and, you know, there's, there's not much they have to, to heal you, and that's what happened. She just went to sanatorium, and eventually she died. Trying to, go to the next line. So here is a newspaper clipping, James Edward Padgett. Mrs. James Edward Padgett died yesterday morning in a sanatorium at Wellnessville, Pennsylvania, caused by heart trouble. She's survived by her husband, James, two sons, Edward and Harry, and a daughter, Ellenita. So you can imagine the grief that overcome James. You know, and then they are soulmates, which means, you know, once they meet, it's, it's, they never forget each other. And he felt guilty for the way he treated her, and it was a compulsion for him to make amends. And at the time, spiritualist was very popular, even though nobody would admit it, they would go to seance, especially the elite. And James was part of the elite. And so he went to see a medium named Mrs. Malby. And I want to sort of give a shout out to Denise and Suzie Tomy, who made this research and found so much proof and evidence of the lives of James Padgett and, and everyone around him. And here is a clipping that they found of the séance where Mrs. Malby was attending with Mrs. Gates. And it was the First Spiritualist Church. So that's kind of a very funny coincidence, because I'm the vice president of the First United Spiritualist Church. So I kind of shuckled when I saw that. And then what happened is Mrs. Malby described Helen, and that's how she convinced Padgett that it was indeed Helen talking through her. And so let's go to the next account, which is a bit detailed about how. So Shona, you want to read that one, please?
"You can imagine my grief and sense of guilt upon learning of my dear Helen's death in the sanatorium. I was beyond comfort and felt responsible for so much of the pain that she endured over the years of her illness. My longing for her became intense and the grief at times unbearable. I did take comfort in my church life, but that only went so far. My loneliness and longing for Helen, who I, who I seemed to love more intensely through her absence, brought me to the practice of spiritualism, which I had heard about since it was widely known. Although skeptical, I proceeded to make my inquiries and attend a few séances. Each visit intrigued me, but did not entirely convince my intellect that what I was hearing were indeed the voices of the departed. Mrs. Malby seemed to describe Helen with such detail and conveyed so many personal bits of information that I was almost entirely convinced. My lawyer, my lawyerly mind tried in vain to discredit this experience, but in the end, my heart told me of its truthfulness. Mrs. Malby explained to me that I too had a gift for spirit communication, and that I should sit down with paper and pen. In time, I was communicating with my beloved Helen. We were together again, so to speak, but this time, I was paying more attention to what my dear wife had to tell me than I ever did while she was in the flesh. My grief was completely assuaged by this unexpected turn of events. I became smitten with dear Helen all over again. She was my source of comfort, and her stories about her life over there kept me in rapt attention each night as I set my pencil upon the full scap and involuntarily began to write, all the while feeling her presence. All the while feeling her presence and love for me."
Thank you, Shona. So automatic writing can turn into, if you're communicating with your ex, your wife, love letters. So that's what's also nice about Padgett, you read so many love letters. And for those of you who don't know automatic writing, never seen automatic writing, this is an example of how it works. So, you know, this is a message from Ellen, and if you take some time, you'll see that every word's, it's sort of here. Quite clearly, I would say, probably Padgett had a really good handwriting. It all comes in one flow of writing, would say one stream of consciousness. I just used to say that he didn't even know why he wrote until after he had a look at it. And so here's a message from Ellen, where probably he was going to the church, and she was next to him. "Yes, I was, and when she sung, 'Oh, dry those tears', I thought, 'Oh, you need not let any tears flow for me, as I was with you and was wholly yours, and you did not have to feel that there was any doubt as to my loving you.'" And I think I'll let Shona continue.
"Come to my arms and let me hug you and kiss you and tell you how much I love you, for I'm so filled with love tonight, that I can scarcely wait for you to come over. So be my own true sweetheart and lover, your own true Helen."
So beautiful. And that healed his grief. It replaced the pain by love, which, which I think it's fantastic. The events of nineteen fourteen, that all happened in nineteen fourteen, because Ellen passed away that year, and it's pretty charged. So I made a few, like an axis, so you can see all that was going on in just one year, and how fast he became a medium. So in February twelve, Ellen's is passing into the second sphere. And we know because she came to a message later on and let us know. And, and then James sort of attending many spiritualist seance, you know, is researching, came across Mrs. Malby. Those are like over two months. And he's also must have attended seance at the Colburn. So the Colburn is another family of spiritualists. Everybody is gifted, a bunch of artists, medium. They live in Tacoma Park in Washington DC, and you have the picture of the son and, and the father here. And they play a big role. They are like the spiritualist mentors of Padgett, I would say. And he started writing, we don't know how many writings he did, not all the messages are preserved. And there were a lot of personal messages from his relatives and from Ellen above all. And in May thirty-first, that's the first preserved message was from Helen. And what happened is, at some point, James was reading so much that he started hearing about the sphere, the sphere spirit, and how this soul progression and spirit kind of move from one to another when they're ready. And so there's like eternal progress, you know, and he's kind of wondering, if you're staying close to the earth plane, talking to me, I mean, I'm pleased, but, you know, I don't want you to being stuck here because of me, I want you to progress. And Helen, of course, she, you know, she was not so, so happy to hear that, but, you know, she said, okay, well, I'll ask. You know, I see you, I see you, you got a point. I'm going to ask my grandmother, your grandmother, because she is the most bright spirit that came to her, and for the truth. And this is how the divine love truth first came to the ears of Helen. So the grandmother, Anne, Anne Rollins, just told Helen, it's very simple, just, just, you know, work on your soul. And the way to do that is prayer, prayer to the Creator, get the love from Source, you know, no one can go higher than the Source. So it makes sense that you would use the Source to level up and, and be happy and more loving. And he tells that to Padgett, and that is a spark that started the entire thing. And it's funny that it comes from a Padgett suggestion. But it's almost like his soul contract was resurfacing and say, hey, it's time to do what you're meant to do. And, and Dr. Leslie Stone here is another very important figure, is the one who published the message. They were not published during Padgett's life, because Padgett was a lawyer and didn't want to mix the two, because it would damage his business. And Dr. Leslie Stone, again, is guided to Padgett, and they meet, and, and start to become part of the band. So at that point in July twenty-eighth, World War One begins. And that's a really curious timing, that Jesus would choose, you know, nineteen fourteen, when darkness is about to sweep the world, to introduce again the truth of, of divine, divine love, and to help people remember God. So I think it's kind of, was an opportunity at that time, the same like as earth change are going to be an opportunity, an opportunity right now. They had a window at that time to bring divine love. And so what happened is probably Jesus come and talked to Helen, congratulated her on the rapport, and inform her that he would like to speak to Padgett, because that was his plan all along. He knew Padgett was destined to do that, to receive, because he's such an amazing medium. But of course, everybody has free will, but through the help of Helen, he's going to introduce himself. And as often happened, it's too much for Padgett. Padgett had very rigid belief, is a Methodist. And so he believes all the Christian doctrines. And when, when he got the message from Jesus, he felt unworthy. He couldn't believe it, and he ended up burning the messages, thinking that he must be deceived by the devil, because some of the content was contradicting the Bible, and so that couldn't be. But then, you know, he continued pen and paper, talking to Ellen every night, and the relatives come. And he has so many messages, if you read this, so many images encouraging him to continue, and, and saying that, okay, it's really is Jesus who came through, and et cetera, et cetera. So in the end, they form a group, Dr. Leslie Stone, Eugene Morgan, which is also a lawyer, and Dr. Gogur, which I don't know a lot about, but he was also part of the core group that was sitting with Padgett as he was receiving the messages. And of course, Padgett continued his spiritualist exploration at that time. So this is, this is the most important part that, that, you know, of the, of the message that Jesus gave, so I just wanted to include that one. And for some reason, the, the writing is a little bit less clear. So I wonder if it's because Ellen has a better rapport with Padgett, I'm not sure. But I, I can, it's harder for me to distinguish the words on this one. So this is what it say, question, what does it mean to be born again? "It is the flowing of the Holy Spirit into the soul of a man, and the disappearing of all attended to keep it in the condition of sin and error. 'Tis not the working of the man's own will, but the grace of God. 'Tis the love of God that passes all understanding. You will soon experience the change, and then you will be a happy man, fit to lead others to the truth of God. Be a man who loves his God and his fellow." Be a man who loves his God and his fellow men. Your love is only known of the earthly kind, but it will soon be of the things spiritual. So born again, that's an interesting statement. You know, and that was the, the thing that Jesus tried to explain to Nicodemus in the Bible. And this idea of to be born again, to be purified completely, just like coming up with the purity of a baby. That's a revolutionary part of the, of the Padgett. It's not through sacrifice, it's not through any other thing that the active agent that is the love of God that commonly called the Holy Spirit. And, and so you can receive it and you can accumulate it and you can experience the grace of God. So it's a personal relationship with God. So all those concepts were very, very ahead of their time. Religion was not understood that way. So Padgett didn't want them to go public. Now, it's hard for us, for those of you who haven't read the Padgett, to really, you know, you're like, oh, Padgett, where's this guy? I mean, it's another medium, right? Another medium was channels Jesus. And unless you read the Padgett and you sort of connect to the truth, you won't have a clear idea of how important this medium is. And so I choose to pay tribute to the quality of his mediumship because he was just like any other man, you know, he was not more saint than another. But he has been chosen for his quality, for his craft as a medium. So I let Shauna read this extract from the reason given by Jesus, why he chose Mr. Padgett.
There are certain qualities in your constitution, both spiritual and material, that render you susceptible to the influence of our powers and to the use by us for the purpose of our design and work. And it may seem strange to you that in all the long ages preceding, I have not found one human with the qualification to fit him for the work. I have used others before, but they have failed to submit their minds and souls and beliefs and forethoughts to our influence and directions as you have so far done. Many humans have the qualified conditions of spiritual and material makeup to perform our wishes and work. But as they all have free will, which we cannot compel, and as circumstances and environments and education and beliefs are elements which affect and determine the possibility of our finding an instrument suitable for our purposes, we have not been able to find a medium who was qualified to be used for our work. You, of course, understand that you were not selected because of any special goodness or freedom from sin or because you were more beloved by the Father, for there were many superior to you in goodness and more in at one moment with the will of the Father and whose love and the results therefrom were more perfect than yours.
So we found through that message that there were others. And others were ones such as Swedenborg, a Swedish philosopher, sort of lived like 104 years. You know, you don't see those things very commonly, but he lived a really long life and it was about 100 years before Padgett. And this is what he has to say to Padgett from the spirit world.
But when a mortal has conferred upon him a work which does not have for its object the accumulation of wealth or the attain of fame or position, but the great and vital end of showing men the way by which they can become reconciled to God and partake of his very nature in love and obtain immortality, then I say that failure means a great catastrophe for him and a greater calamity for humanity. And that man is in a condition of mind and recollection beyond description. Very few men have had conferred upon them this great privilege and power and responsibility. And I was one of them and was a failure, not because I did not try to receive, deliver the truth, but because I prevented by my preconceived ideas of what the truth should be, the real and pure truth from coming to me and hence to humanity. In a way, I was unconscious of my failure or of the existence of conditions in me that caused the failure. Yet when I came to the spirit world and realized the failure that I had made, then everything was a failure to my conscience.
This is a sobering account of a man who was mystic, who received messages from Jesus. But because of his own belief and his own knowledge and everything that was in his brain, he altered the information and therefore the angels couldn't use the divine truths that were coming through him because they were not 100% accurate. And, you know, and it's, it's, it's a simple message and yet it seems to be so difficult to relay to medium on earth. So you could say Jesus was one in a billion and I would say Padgett is one in a million, but for different reason. And, and so when Padgett started, and you know, he was very dedicated. Like if you look at the amount of messages that he received, so from the moment he was, think of himself an accomplished medium and that's happened in 1914, was very comfortable with automatic writing. In 1915, he received 407 messages, that's more than one a day. So you can see the kind of dedication. And then it went down over the years. And if you look at the bottom, you have the top five contributors. So of course Ellen, then Jesus, then the Apostle John, his grandmother was very spiritual and delivered a lot of messages of truths and another Apostle Luke. So you could see that with 150 messages from Jesus, Jesus made extensive use of his instrument. And so many truths were delivered to James Padgett. And, you know, you could almost say that once has been told once, you almost don't need another medium, you know, it's there. It's a simple truth of divine love is there. So it's a matter of making sure it is never lost. And I think one of the reasons that it was published, it was, became a book and volumes is for it to endure, just like the Bible endure and unfortunately has been, you know, so, so edited so many times and this mix of truths and untruths. They wanted to come up with volumes or volumes with S that would endure and that were mixed with more truths than untruths. And so Padgett is not 100% perfect medium, but he got as close to perfection as a man of his time could, could have, could have got to. And so here we are today in the Padgett Study Group and we're gonna pay tribute to those matches and the truths behind them. And I hope you enjoy the journey with us. And I, and I thank you for your attention. So I got the appendix slides, if you're interested. Was talking about the publications to Victor Leslie Stone. And then this chronology of events, so I'm gonna circulate the slides. So if, if one day you're confused and you're like, oh, wait, what happened? You got a chronology of events and you can just reconcile what's going on in the Padgett and what's going on in real life. And they got some useful resources here. The testimony of Dr. Leslie Stone, I would highly recommend. It's a great read and it's the beginning of the volume one, it's a preface basically. And the top contributors, because I like Excel table. And God bless you and thank you. So I guess we're gonna move to our next portion and reintroduce our host, Jean Fike.
Wow. Thank you, Raphael. Isn't that an extraordinary overview of the life of James Padgett? An ordinary man and his wife and the love story of really discovering their true passion and love for each other from spirit. And Raphael, that was a magnificent job that you have done, putting it all into perspective. So we'd like to, we have about half an hour left and we would like to invite some discussion, some comments, some questions. And we'd also like to have a closing prayer too. So maybe we can just see how the discussion is going. We should have planted somebody to, to start us off. And maybe we could stop for a prayer in about 15 minutes. So I hope that will suit everybody. So what are you taking away from that presentation? Who'd like to start? Any surprises? Ricky?
I, I was actually, that was amazing presentation, just absolutely amazing. I was really surprised to read that Swedenberg spoke through James Padgett because he came through Andrew Jackson Davis. As the volumes of Andrew Jackson Davis is given by Swedenberg. So I was really very, very surprised. I didn't realize that he came through Padgett, but then I didn't realize many things about Padgett. So that was, that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation.
I hope Swedenberg's message through, how do you say his name?
Andrew Jackson. I, I don't know what he gave through because I haven't read, I'm just aware that he gave. He finished his work, he began his work Swedenberg, but he died. Then he finished his work through Andrew Jackson Davis. Through the automatic writing of Andrew Jackson. So that was really interesting.
Wow. Thanks for pointing that out, Ricky.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's the writing. I haven't read these books. They are too beyond my understanding, but.
What I found, so, go ahead.
In my research, I found a lot of writings that actually introduced divine love. And I think that was the influence of celestial spirit across time. Yeah, so I'm curious to see what he has wrote, what he has written.
Also that everything started in 1914. So the, the, the birth of spiritualism was, was like the beginning and then in 48, when it continues. So that was really interesting at 1914, when James Padgett and Andrew Jackson David, all of this started at the same time.
It's quite a perspective, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's quite amazing.
Also, Yogananda started in the 1920s. But the difference is Padgett never went public. So we always, in this group, always kind of try to imagine if Padgett went public in 1920s, what would be, where would we be at that, at that time?
That's really interesting. Padgett just didn't want to reveal himself, his gifts, because as Raphael explained his story, appearances and his reputation as a lawyer and there in Washington DC, he, he just didn't want to expose himself like that. And relatively few messages from Jesus, that was astonishing too.
Maureen has something to contribute, but you're on mute.
I thank you. Yeah, I'm playing right, putting the hand up. I like that. What I really appreciated, what, many things, Raphael, wonderful job. And what I, what really jumped out at me was the part where it was shared how as a young boy in church, he would feel these tuggings of his heart. And later, the finding that it was Jesus trying to make rapport with him. And in some of the messages that we've had come through as far as, you know, divine love mediumship and such is how, you know, based on the constitution of the person, but the person who is potentially able to serve as, as that medium, it is years that they are observed and watched how they move through their tests and how they sort of walk through life and how dedicated they are. What is their character also is a big part of the preparation for, I, I don't know, this is 100% just for celestial mediumship, but it has been shared with us that, you know, there's, we've been in preparation for, for a very long time. So I loved how he recognized somehow, however it came through, that even as a young boy, you know, Jesus was, was prodding at his heart and his soul. So that was something that I didn't know.
Yes, oh, very observant. I think so too. And Karen?
Well, I think that's an interesting comment, Maureen, because we're looking at 1914, like everything has just started from nowhere almost. You know, he lost his wife in grief, he begins to write letters and the world opens up. But in fact, this was a lifelong process in the preparation. Yeah, thanks for connecting those dots for me.
Covered up by the power of the mind and the material concerns. I think that is the number one takeaway lesson. Haven't we been learning that over and over again in all our circles and studies? It's the tyranny of that mind when our souls want to come through. And the challenge every day of trying to let our souls come into ascendancy reminds me of most programmed, befriend your soul. And I, I think that's a prerequisite for anyone on the divine path. Thank you. Jimbo, you look so poised. What are you thinking, brother?
You read my mind. You're, you're, I think you're a psychic, Jean.
I'm a psychic.
I do wanna mention something. I wasn't sure if I should, but some of you may know Gregory Boster. He was around, I think, all the way back in the 1970s, involved in Divine Love Community in California and whatnot. He told me a story several years ago. And it was about 1914. And he said, the guy who started the Jehovah's Witnesses, was his name Russell, I think was his last name. He started in the late 1800s and Jesus would come to him, say, "I'm not God." And, you know, whatever it was, he said, "My second coming is gonna be in September in 1914." And that's what I remember from Greg's story. I mean, there was a lot more to it, but it's what I remember. So 1914 came around September and Jesus didn't show up at the Jehovah's Witnesses thing and they kicked him out. And a guy named, I think, Rutherford took over and it became the Watchtower and all these things that we kind of know about Jehovah's Witnesses. But of course, as far as we know, the first message from Jesus to Padgett was in September in 1914. And he says, "This is my second coming." And with some of the same information, but a whole lot more. So I was just finding it really interesting. Everyone was talking about 1914. And that's my little antidote, so.
Thanks for that, Jimbo. Thank you. Another perspective. Anything else about the teachings about his life? Well, oh, Shauna, Shauna.
Yeah, I really thought it was interesting. I like how you made the connection Raphael between the Civil War breaking out and the earth changes now. And everyone's getting so many messages now. And I also thought it was interesting, the part where Jesus said, you know, he's not saintly. And so Maureen, you were saying that everyone is, is molded for this and watched. And yet you would think someone has to be so saintly, but that was not the case. And I'm really curious if, if James Padgett didn't show, didn't share what was happening because of his reputation, were there others? Are there people we don't know about?
That were divine love mediums bringing through the truths? And you mean?
Yeah, just, it's a thought because it seems like spiritualism just appeared all of a sudden. And are there other, you know?
There were other mediums at the same time Padgett was receiving his messages. There was Reverend Owen in England and also James R. Lee's. And all of them received messages. And all of them received messages during the same time Paget did, some a little before, some, I don't know if anybody got after Paget. And they touched on divine love and progression through the spheres. But um from my perspective, as beautiful as their writings are, and I would recommend them to anyone because they are progressive and they are about God's love. He didn't get what Paget got, which was pretty spectacular and transformational, I think.
Shauna, I do think that many people do receive messages in different ways, psychic gifts, spiritual gifts. But I'm, I don't guess that uh there would be the um the volumes and you know, all of the truths uh such as we've seen with Paget that have been lost, at least.
And I have to say as well that Paget continued to develop his his uh mediumship. And he was not until he had accumulated in his souls through prayer enough divine love that he started receiving higher truths from Jesus. So if you look at the messages, they sort of evolve in their language away from the Christian dogma towards the actual divine truths uh that are a little bit more lighter and and beautiful. Um and so you, so yes, if he accepted to be the instrument and then they sort of explained to him, okay, now we have to work and you have to be in condition. And so you have to pray almost every day. And that's what happened.
And he was also, Raphael, help me with this, he was also guided not to um spend much time with darker spirits. They said that this would impact his condition. And uh he received that guidance repeatedly. And uh Raphael, Jimbo, you're Cliff, you're the experts on the, on the.
Karen, did you raise your hand? Okay, Karen, what do you wanna say?
Well, I didn't want to interrupt Jean, but um I had raised my hand, but I put it back down again Raphael, because my thoughts stream was actually the the same as what you had brought forward in a sense, that there are so many ways of connecting and in terms of development and mediumship, so many avenues there. And yet there was a message very clearly to focus on prayer and to focus on divine love. And I think that's maybe what's made the difference for James Paget's messaging.
Oh, I believe that wholeheartedly. And Alan, I've had that guidance repeatedly over the decades that when there, we have so many loved ones, you know, that are lost in the world, lost in spirit. The darker ones come to us and um the guidance we've received personally, and I, I don't know if it fits for everybody, but to pray for those souls to, and that spirit, there are many, many spirits from the celestial heavens and all the way down. They um it's their job in spirit, it's their role to try to help spirits uh progress through the spheres. And so um it feels like we've been told to leave that work alone um for um spirit guides rather than try to do it ourselves. And we know of other mediums that have also received the same guidance.
Yeah, I just think that's quite fascinating to me because I spent many years in and out of mediumship and different spiritual practices.
Well, that's all choice, isn't it?
Always.
Knowing um having some information to help you make the choices is really helpful.
So true, yeah.
Well, shall we have a prayer? Would everyone mute? And I will say a prayer and um oh gracious God. We thank you for James Paget and for his beloved soulmate Helen. And for all that he has done in his life so many years ago that is benefiting each of us here today in the divine love movement. We thank you for what you have done. We thank Jesus and all the disciples and the celestial angels that are working so hard to bring the truths of God's love to humanity and the healing of the world. Oh, we thank you, we thank you. We ask humbly that we may be used as light bringers in your service, that our souls will be open and receptive to receive your greatest blessing of divine love. That our souls will awaken and that we will follow the light. We ask to be used as channels of blessing in this world. And we dedicate our lives to you in your service. We thank you for our brother James and for the legacy that we share. Amen.
I am here, your brother James Paget. I come in the love and the grace of God. First of all, let me express my deep gratitude for this coming together on my behalf, so to speak, for honoring my life, my work. May it bless you all. There is one thing that becomes obvious when discussing the gifts of any one person for those who can write profound books. Beautiful songs of love. Poems that touch your heart. And yet, those individuals who bring their gifts are often very flawed from the point of view of the world. And one may have a great gift, but maybe is not such a great person. I don't mean to say or suggest that those who bring gifts that inspire people are evil. No, just human. And therefore I encourage all of you to explore your gifts, to know that you are worthy and to step forward in truth. As you can see, even I, with all the messages that came through me, had reluctance to share with the world. Concerned about besmirching my reputation. And yet I did have a gift. And these truths I received are just as true now as they were when I received them. So find what resonates with your heart with each soul. Because your longing is more than a quest for information. More than an intellectual understanding. It is the deep longing of each soul to be loved. And on this path to receive the great love of the Creator. Given to every soul that asks. As the Master said, in sincere faith, in earnest aspiration. So let your heart soar in the knowing that you have discovered a great treasure. And also know that as you honor me, you bring transformation to yourselves in the love of God. I shall be with you in your studies supporting each one. And I shall guide and influence as I can and when necessary. Lastly, know that I am not the same James as when on earth. For I am a redeemed soul transformed in the love of God in the celestial heavens. And I come to you with all my love and blessings in the grace of God. Thank you. May God bless you.
Oh gracious God. We thank you. We thank you for this beautiful prayer and blessing from James Paget. And for everyone here, open and receptive to study the legacy of Jesus's second coming and the truths of divine love. Oh, we thank you, we thank you. And we love you. Amen. Well, thank you, James, and thank you, Jimbo, for channeling. What an awesome message. Thank you everyone for coming to our first session. Remember to post your comments, your questions, ideas in the WhatsApp group. Shauna will be sending out um readings for the next session. We will see you in two weeks' time and have a shout out for Cliff and Dorothy whose topic is on prayer and um developing our relationship, each one of us with God. So that's a pretty amazing topic. So our thoughts and prayers are with you as you're preparing. So we will see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you to everyone and God bless you. Bye for now.
Bye guys.
Bye. Good job. Jimbo's.